And so I would appreciate it if you absolutely minimize the chatter between individuals. These mics are hot, and every time somebody whispers to somebody else, or clicks a pen, or mumbles something under their breath, you will be canonized in the
Video.
In the video for now, and as long as the media stands up. So just, again, have some patience. We'll get through everything. We've got a lot of these things to go through, and so I appreciate your cooperation on that. Now, if I could call everybody to order, we'll start moving here. Mary Hansen.
Here.
Beth Justice.
Here.
Larry Chuning.
Here.
Bill Goldsmith is here. Alana Courtney.
Here.
Marjorie Austin.
Here.
Sandy Sturgill.
Here.
Having a quorum, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Submit.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. Motion made and seconded, do I have any discussion? No discussion. Start at the other end. Sandy Sturgill.
Yes.
Marjorie Austin.
Yes.
Alana Courtney.
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Chuning.
Yes.
Beth Justice.
Yes.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to this, if Andrea Arard, our town attorney, could come up and take over to lay some of the groundwork, that would be grand.
Who is the chairman of the Planning Commission?
I am acting as the chairman of the Planning Commission for this matter. I'm the vice chair.
Can you understand me with the mask on?
Barely.
If you would please call the Planning Commission to order and establish a quorum.
Okay. Planning Commission, if you can please note your presence. Gary.
Here.
And Katie.
Here.
Don Greer.
Here.
Okay, and Louis.
Yes.
Here.
And I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you would please open the first public hearing, which is ordinance number 2024-08. It's a 1.479 acre parcel, and the ordinance, if approved, would rezone it from R1 to R2. It's located northwest and adjacent to 85 Laurel Farms Lane. All you have to say is I now open the public.
I now open the public hearing for ordinance number 2024-08.
Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Do you want a staff presentation?
And so.
Staff.
All right.
It's in the agenda.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a, these are a series of public hearings held under the authority of 15.22204, Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, with the necessary public notices having been given. The application materials have been and are available for review in the town offices. This is one staff report covering all of the ordinances. Let me be clear, this is one staff report covering all of the ordinances, and as the town attorney leads you through each one, please understand that these descriptors are for the entire, the entire package. All right. Location, it specifically has been noted already on the first ordinance, but generally, these are lands include, lands that are included, la southeast, southwest, and south-southwest, up to 1,200 feet of the intersection of Waverly Road and Virginia Street. The impact of these is in most cases, there is no impact. Establishing uses can continue on other properties, the density allowance is increased, thus the potential for development at a higher level is present. The comprehensive plan from 2012 has included this area as, on page eight, as a, as a planning area. And the logistics in, of that study area, that planning area, can be found on page 30. And while at the time, outside the corporate limits, these areas were noted as having impact on the town via resident visitation, utility service, and transportation connection. The future land use plan exists, followed existing uses to the singular parcel and not via any area or district designation, so the uses proposed in that document match up well to what is proposed. While not associated with any specific parcel, area, or district, there's general language in the comprehensive plan to support the rezoning, to reduce conflicts in use, and expand economic activity, and you have those set out for you in the staff report. Zoning compliance. Under Middlesex's zoning, these properties were zoned residential or community village, a mixed-use description. At present, there are several non-conforming uses on the R1-zone property to include the offices of the town. Rezoning as proposed will correct those. The zonings proposed are tied to use as well as adjacent or nearby uses indoor zoning. You have another example there, relative to the volunteer fire department. What they have facing Virginia Street is B1, and we're just matching that designation for their properties. The town of Urbana is undertaking the rezoning of land brought into the town through a boundary line adjustment in 2023 to reflect current use and promote compatible development. Being compliant to the mixed-use development of adjacent lands supportive of goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and supported of all landowners, staff recommends approval. Now, if I may, I know we've had several inquiries that have come in in the last couple of days. The boundary line adjustment is reflected right there. The two blackened-out parcels were also included in the boundary line adjustment in 2023. They belong to the Hampton Roads Sanitation District, and for administrative reasons, they were not able to sign off on the application. So they are not included in tonight's proposal. All the other properties that you should see shaded there, and I'm going to walk over a minute and point out a few things. All the ones you see shaded there are included in the boundary line adjustment from 2023. I've gone back and looked at the folder, I've gone back and I've looked at the state law. State law only requires the properties being taken into, or incorporated into the town to be notified. There is no adjacent owner notification for boundary line adjustments. There is a requirement that there be public hearings advertised, one by the county, one by the town. Those were done. So any reasons as to why, well, we didn't know that we were adjacent to these properties, that's why they were advertised in the paper. Okay? So that, that issue should be set aside. The town and the county have complied in that. Whenever a locality brings in additional property, whether it's through annexation or a boundary line adjustment, and think boundary line adjustment as friendly annexation, both parties, everybody's in agreement, the, when that boundary line adjustment takes effect, immediately, all the properties are zoned to the incorporated locality's lowest zoning designation. That for us is R1. So everything's R1 right now at this moment. As we walk through the ordinances, you'll see what the changes are proposed. But let me do this, I'm going to walk over to the screen, and I hope I can get picked up.
Mary, just need to slide that intercom down, and you should be able to get picked up.
So each of the ordinances is reflected on this number here. The zoning designation is either B1, R2, 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 B1, B1, B1.
Excuse me, Mr. Costin, can you speak up a little?
Okay. I'm sorry if I yell, if I'm yelling. All right. Each parcel has been designated with a zoning designation that's proposed and the ordinance amendment that it's tied to. And so if you go through, you can see the numbers. So the first one tonight is number eight, ordinance 2024-8, 2024-9, 2024-10 is the piece of property that we're sitting in right now. 11 is everything around here, basically the lot over to the road and then back, the field behind us. 11 is, oh, let's see, 11, 11, 11, 11. Oh, there we go, there you go, that's 11. Okay, so 12 is on the corner. Then you have 13, which is this large piece. 14 is a little sliver of road. 15 is the water tank. 16's the volunteer fire department, 17's volunteer fire department. With that, again, members of council and members of the Planning Commission, I'll be ready to take any questions you all might have, but again, remember what I presented is the totality of the package, you'll be taking each of these up individually. But I'd be happy to take any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and so now we open up public comment on this ordinance, right?
On 08, yes.
All right.
Excuse me, can I ask that people please refrain from speaking, because it's, our microphones are picking up everything, and it's not, I'm not going to be able to hear what council is saying.
Yes, please. All right. I'm assuming that since this has been reordered, that Lisa Walker is designated as first spokesman, and could I have your address for the record?
426 Laurel Farms Lane.
At the podium, please.
He was asking, I was answering.
426 Laurel Farms.
Yes, good evening, my name is Lisa Walker, I live at 426 Laurel Farms Lane in Urbana. Thank you so much for letting me speak today. I am the, I am the president of Laurel Farms Property Association. I believe I need to give a little bit more detail. I will say, I was on vacation last week, I picked this up this week, it has been quite an experience to learn a lot about tax maps, they are very confusing. You have to actually go to find out a lot of information. In June 28, 2021, Thurston Properties LLC purchased Lot 1 of Laurel Farms Property Association, that's your 8 and 9 on your map. November 8, 2021, there appears to have been a division of this lot, in exchange of a portion of Lot 1 between Thurston Property and the Town of Urbana. There was a public notice, the street addresses, it was just the tax map, so we did not pick that up. June 28, I mean, June 8, 2023, is when the boundary line adjustment was moving Lot 1 from Middlesex County to the Town of Urbana. I'm just sleeping here. We oppose, I oppose the rezoning of item 8. Laurel Farms Property Association is governed by a recorded covenants and restrictions. This property is under this covenants and restrictions, and it should not have been divided. It is a legal division according to our covenants and restrictions. The description of R2, according to your town code, R2, the purpose of this district is to provide high-density residential uses and to provide for a variety of housing types and densities, as well as for public and semi-public uses and accessory uses as be necessary and normally associated with residential surroundings. This is clearly against our covenants restrictions, which, apologize, and I want to provide a copy of our covenants restrictions to the town council, may I do that? I will pass that on. And number one clearly states, no building shall be erected or placed other than single-family residence, garages, structures, appurten to single-family dwellings. Laurel Farms is a small neighborhood.
30 seconds remaining.
Consisting of 22 lots utilizing a private road that is maintained by our association. We also have more restrictions than in the town code, and we really wish that you would consider not approving this. I've lived in this neighborhood for 27 years, and I'm very concerned how this will affect our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, it's Pam Hauck.
Hi.
Your address, please.
Yeah, Pam Hauck, I live at 246 Laurel Farms Lane.
246?
Yes. And I've been a full-time resident with my husband there for eight years now, and also am vice president of the Laurel Farms Property Owners Association. So as Lisa said, as our president, our community is governed by covenants and restrictions, everyone has to comply, everyone needs to submit what kind of improvements they want to do to the property, it can only be a single-family dwelling, and we're pretty, pretty strict, you know, in order, because people are in a, in a covenant and restricted property owners association. So we're just asking for the council to please vote against rezoning those properties to be developed for a larger density allowance, which would be against our, our covenants. So thank you.
Is it presumptive to think that you live at 246 Laurel?
You've got it. Greg Hauck, 246 Laurel Farms Lane, not an officer, but a member of the association, where we've lived now seven, going on eight years. And this whole thing is a little bit confusing, I really appreciated some time with Mr. Costin the other day, trying to understand the background of what was happening, but it seems like a piece has been missing somehow, or that a really important piece of information was not picked up when this whole process was happening. And that is, that the property in consideration for 08 and 09 are part of a property owner association that is governed by covenants and restrictions. This is not, these are not things that are deep in the document, deep in the weeds, that are sort of hidden, and you might not notice it, but statement number one in our covenants and restrictions, which Lot number one is governed by, "The land hereby conveyed shall be used for residential purposes only." That's the first sentence. The second sentence is this, "No parcel or any part thereon shall be used for any commercial purposes or business of any kind." That's pretty clear. When you get to number two of the covenants and restrictions, "Any proposed alteration or improvement," is a better way to say it, "to that land, to that lot, must be approved by the Board of the Laurel Farms Association." And what they tend to approve is single-family dwellings, which are the only improvements that are allowed, that conform to more detailed covenants and restrictions laid out in our documents. So it would seem very strange to rezone it, R2, when the only thing that can be built on Lot 1, whether it be Lot 1A, Thurston Properties, Lot 1B, Town of Urbana, is a single-family dwelling. And if Thurston Properties built a single-family dwelling, they couldn't build 2, it can't be heavy-use residential. If Town of Urbana built a single-family dwelling, sorry, am I out of time?
30 seconds.
30 seconds. If the Town of Urbana built a single-family dwelling on Lot 1 Part B, then Thurston Properties could not develop anything on the rest of the lot, because it's all part of the lot. So anyway, I want to join my fellow, my fellow members of Laurel Farms Association and ask the town council not approve the rezoning of 08 and 09. Thank you.
All right. Number four, Scott Cratchit.
Scott Cratchit.
And, and your address, please.
346 Laurel Farms Lane. I've lived at that residence in the association since 1996, even before my retirement from Christchurch Parish, and I'm still there. I only found out about this situation yesterday, and we've been communicating fast and furious ever since. But basically, property was conveyed from Lot 1 without our knowledge, or our being informed of it. And basically, that is contrary, that is strict violation of the covenants and restrictions which have governed us for almost 40 years or so, give or take. So yes, I'm concerned that this was done. I don't know why it was done, and I'm not sure why the town council, the planning commission, and others were not aware of our covenants and restrictions, or that that parcel of land was part of our covenants and restrictions. Members of the association are assessed, a very modest assessment, once a year, paid by December 31st to the treasurer of the association. We're confused, because if this takes place, do we have two landowners here, the Town of Urbana, or do we have another owner, Thurston Properties? It throws the whole of the association in confusion. So I reiterate what my colleagues have said. By the way, I'm the secretary of the association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Steph Warren. Your name and address, please.
Joe Prete, 22 Laurel Farms Lane.
22?
22.
And last name spoke, please.
P-R-E-T-E, Prete.
Prete, okay. All right, go ahead, sir.
Well, I live right about at Ground Zero. I'm the house on the corner, so that's where the action would be.
Where the action is.
Where the action is. I purchased that property for the reason that these shenanigans wouldn't happen. I paid more money to come into the community, so these things wouldn't happen. Otherwise, I could have went out to the country, they could do what they want to do. So I'm asking, please don't approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is your property the one where you shoot?
I'm the shooter.
You're the shooter.
Yeah. Right, and I'm the shooter? Thousand complaints, and I'm still here.
All right.
Thank you.
I guess that closes the public com, all right. Mark?
Just wanted to mention, I'm Mark Williams, I'm John Barber's, the Thurston Properties senile. Just want to make sure everybody's clear, that this is still a lot, a recorded lot and a recorded subdivision that is under the restrictions of the covenants. So all of the covenants and restrictions for the homeowners association still have to be met. So if anything was going to be done on Lot 8, the, the most that could be done would be a single-family residence that meets all of the homeowners association requirements. So just to make sure everybody's comfortable that it still has to adhere to the covenants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So basically, you're saying that because it's vacant land, it, it doesn't matter how it's zoned, it still has to comply with the restrictive covenants when it is developed?
Correct. It's still a recorded lot in a subdivision that's part, that has covenants and restrictions.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the town administrator a question?
Yes, please.
Could you identify on the ground where these lots are, like in relation to where we are?
Sure.
Now, I think there was, let me go to the. There was a reference made that one of the parcels didn't, wasn't identified by an address. That's because the county doesn't address until there's a structure. Okay? So you can't have an address unless you've got a structure. So the two that we're talking about first, which I'll, I'll answer, I'll, I'll get the location in a second, the two that we're talking about have no structure, there's no way for us to advertise it short of a reference by distance and a tax map parcel number.
Right here. So if we were to go out the back door and walk across the field, and then turn right and go up into the woods, you'd be on this piece of property first, and then the well lot, here.
Does that answer it for?
Okay. In that well lot, are you saying that currently there's a well there, or are you making reference to a future plan?
Is there a question from council for me?
Could you address that, or do you want me to address it?
If you don't mind, I don't know the question.
Yeah. That lot, the town has a requirement to maintain, or to produce, have a production well coming up in the future, it's a Department of Environmental Quality requirement that we have another well within eight years after the well that we're doing now. And that's to maintain the water that's available, I think you guys are on town water. And so for that to continue, we need to have wells available, and that is adjacent to, as you can see on the map, where the current existing wells are. The structure that was anticipated would be, as you go out of town, well, you know where all the facilities are. The item there would be a camouflaged, you know, set of pipes that would be protected by a chain link fence back in the woods, is what would go there, to continue to provide all of us with water. And, and if, well, that's enough said.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, that closes public.
Are there more speakers, you can close the public hearing?
Right.
And then if the Planning Commission would like to take up discussion of this item and consider making a recommendation to council.
Okay, so Planning Commission members, is there any further discussion on these lots, correct? Just on these?
Yep.
Just on, just on number eight?
On 08.
Number eight, on number eight. Yes.
Just to make sure that I understand, Bill, what you just said about the well, the well would be?
Number nine.
With that, well's on nine?
Gotcha.
Yes, Gary?
I just want to make clear that while I understand all of the speaker's concerns, there, there's no reason a property can't be zoned one way and yet be limited by covenants from doing things that zoning would allow. And that's my understanding based on other properties I've owned, and so there should be no problem with our voting. These folks could, through their own processes, still assess whatever requirements.
That's correct. And as Mr. Williams stated, the covenants are valid, and they do control the uses on the property.
I have a question.
Yes, Don.
That's on property that was annexed by the town, correct?
Yes.
So it no longer is a part of the homeowners association, is it?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it would be subject to their?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's just 8 and 9, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Just 8 and 9. Other, other discussion? Okay. And is there a proposal for whether to approve, deny, or defer?
Do we approve them all at once?
No.
No, just.
Eight. Just eight.
I move to approve eight.
To recommend approval.
I've moved to recommend approval of eight.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And so let's take a vote. Gary, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, and Katie?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
And Louis?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. So we recommend to council to consider approving the motion on 8.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you like to read council at this time?
Yes. So the Planning Commission has spoken. Do we have any discussion on, they've recommended that we approve ordinance 08, and so do we have any further discussion on that ordinance and the zoning going to? do we have any further discussion on that ordinance and the zoning going to R-two?
Well, yes, I mean, I cannot see why we would not vote to approve it as long as your restrictions still govern that lot. And if they do, then I don't see any problem.
Okay.
Right.
Marjorie, do you have any?
No.
Alana?
No.
Any questions or thoughts?
No.
Okay. Larry?
I have questions about nine, but we're just talking about eight.
Correct. Okay.
I was saying what she said.
Okay. Mary, well, we know where you stand.
Yes.
Okay. All right, no further discussion? Can I entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash O R D dash zero-eight?
I'm so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Starting with Mary Hansen, can I have your vote, please?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
I say yes. Alana?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to ordinance--
Would you like to open the next--
I'd like to open the joint public hearing with the planning commission and the council for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash O R D dash zero-nine.
And this property is located northwest and adjacent to eighty-five Laurel Farms Lane.
And so it's the, do you want to go, we'll go in the order that's written. Pam Hauck?
So my understanding would be that if the covenants and restrictions are still in place, and the Town of Urbana says, "We would like to build a well," that the Property Owners Association can then reject that, if that's what you're saying. So, because a well is not considered a single-family dwelling, if that's my, if that's, if that's correct, that would be a commercial. Also, the way you explained it is that we're coming through the woods. Well, to get to the well, you would come up Red Hill and make a left on Laurel Farms Lane, which is a private road and is maintained by the, by the association, which, to me, that would seem like an issue also.
Okay. Greg Hauck?
Just to reiterate and agree with what Pam said, again, I'm looking at our restrictions that say, "No parcel or any part thereof," and this would be Lot One, Part B, I guess, "no parcel or any part thereof shall be used for any commercial purpose or business of any kind." So, again, our covenants and restrictions are very clear, and the second section under this is that any proposal to make any alteration whatsoever to the raw land needs to be submitted in writing to the association, the association officers for approval. So it sounds like what everyone's saying here tonight is, that's what's going to happen. And if that's what's going to happen, that would be great. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Lisa Walker?
I just want to, you kind of, the same note, same things. I am a bit perplexed, why are we rezoning if nothing's going to change? I will tell you, it is against the violation. And now we are, with this discovery, we're in an unfortunate situation that our association will possibly have to look at going to court to rectify this situation. Also, just quite perplexed why this lot has to be converted to B-one, commercial district, as we're in a small community. But you all are going to make your decisions, and we will make our decisions, so I thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll turn this now over to the planning commission.
Okay. And so is there any discussion on item nine from any of the planning commission members? Don?
Does it have to be zone, B-one, so we can put a well there?
Yes.
I mean--
I believe it does.
Could it not be zoned R-two?
No, that's residential, so it couldn't be, it couldn't be a commercial use and be residential.
So if you, if I may, if you disallow utilities in R-one, then everybody has to disconnect from electricity, water, sewer, okay? Utilities generally go across the spectrum of the zoning districts. This goes to the previous speaker's comment about why do we have to do this. Zoning has to be uniform and applied uniformly. That's state law, okay? What we're trying to do is match up all of our Town of Urbana facilities to the B-one level, unless, with the exception, the marina, there's always an exception. The marina's B-two, okay, because that's waterfront commercial. Don't be confused by the B or the, as a, as a commercial entity. If you'll note on the plat, it says "well lot." If you go back and look at the documents that were recorded when the lot was created, it says "well lot." There's even a footnote that says, "That lot is only to be used as a well lot." So no Summer elevens, no Chick-fil-A's, nothing else. It's not a true commercial, you know, private enterprise lot. It's just a uniform designation that the town has for all of its properties. Now, to answer your question, do we have to do it? No, we don't. But again, zoning's supposed to be uniform. So all of the town properties, particularly those associated with the provision of utilities, and water's the only utility that we provide, has to be in that B-one designation.
Any further discussion?
Isn't the definition of "commercial" to make money? I mean, the town's not in the business of making money.
Again, we don't have commercial designations. We have business designations. But yes, and no, we're not in the business of making money, but neither are we in the business of losing money. And we're going, and we're going to lose money if we have to close down a well and shut down an entire water system. Now, let me, let me take this opportunity, Mr. Dryer, and address another issue that I know has floated out there. Later on tonight, there'll be a bond hearing. That bond hearing has nothing to do with ordinance number nine. It has to do with completing a well project that's actually on the flag-shaped lot in between the two, the two block pieces. That's where the water tower is. There's been a well lot, there's been a well installed there, and that project needs to be completed and connected. That's what the, that's what the bond hearing is about later on. There's some speculation out in the community that our bond hearing had to do with the other lot. That's not the case.
No, what I'm talking about is, if they are saying that in their covenants, nothing commercial can be placed there, I'm saying that, that a well is not something commercial, it's for the town benefit and for their benefit. They're getting water.
I think we're saying the same thing. I'm saying the same thing, that it's not a commercial activity. It's not like a Chick-fil-A or a Summer eleven. It's just business that allows for some, in our zoning district, that's the district that allows for the larger utility operations to take place, okay? I think we're saying the same thing, just a different way.
Okay. Other questions or discussion from planning commission? Okay, do I have a motion to, with regard to ordinance number nine, and that would be either to approve, to deny, or to defer?
I will move to approve ordinance number nine.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and a vote? Gary Lister?
Yes.
Okay, Katie Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, Don Dreher?
Yes.
Louis Hall?
Yes.
Okay, Mary Hansen says yes, and we therefore refer this matter to town council.
All right. In town council, do we have any other discussion here? Sandy, do you have any questions or thoughts?
You know, I really understand y'all's concerns, and I, I think that if that lot, if there was a nice house built there, everybody would be happy with it. And if that house has a well behind it, I don't see that, I feel it like necessary. We've got to have another well. And I don't think it's going to affect building a house there on that lot, and that's all they can do on that lot, it's a house, correct? And the only other thing we can do is the well on the other part of it. That's all. And I do understand your concerns, but I don't know that it's gonna, that it's not a good thing.
All right.
I'm in favor, I think we--
Don't mean to be rude, but--
Yeah.
Um, Marjorie?
I just want to know where water would come from if we can't put another well in. And that's for all of us, not just the few people that live on Laurelville.
Right. Alana?
I have no comment.
Okay. Larry?
I don't think it's that anybody doesn't want a well there, but I want to say this outright and publicly now. I don't think if we put a well there, we got to live by the rules of your association. I don't think we do, and maybe that is a legal question, but this is a public health issue. We took that land out of good faith because we knew we had to expand. This was not a, we didn't do this for ten years or twenty years, we did it for fifty years down the road. And so I'd be real surprised if we have to be governed by an association when we go to put a well, and we got D E Q, and everybody else is going to tell us what to do. But what I'm saying to you, you asked the question, I think we don't have to abide by it. And I'm no lawyer, just a newspaper reporter, don't know much, but I'd be real surprised if we did, so that's all I have to say.
Beth?
I agree with what Sandy said again.
And Mary, do you have anything else to add?
I don't have anything else to add, but I believe that Mr. Berry is trying to get your attention.
I just want to make a correction in your proposed ordinance--
Pardon me. Mr. Berry, could you please stand in the microphone?
Yeah, come up to the--
In your proposed ordinance, where you say, "Be it ordained," do you want to go from R-one to R-two? I don't think that that's your intent. If you look at your proposed ordinance--
It's B-two.
It should, it should be B-one.
I mean, B-one, yep.
Oh, yeah.
Be corrected.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. I have no other questions or comments.
Well, wait a second, well-- This is on--
Is it eight or nine?
This is on oh-nine, and, and the ordinance twenty-twenty-four oh-nine does state to be one.
Yeah, the second line from the bottom--
Yeah, second line from the bottom does--
Oh, I see, okay.
B-one.
All right, thank you.
Right here. For oh-nine.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-four O R D dash zero-nine?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, start at the other end. Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
Alana Courtney?
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Chuning?
Yes.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
And Mary Hansen?
Yes.
All right. Moving on. Now we're taking up ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash ten, and this is parcel ten. I have no public comment associated with that.
Nope.
And if no one has any interest in that, then I'll turn--
No, 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 you should still open the public hearing.
I'll open, open the public hearing, and seeing no public comment on the signing sheet, I will turn it over to the planning--
No, no, no. Is there anyone who would like to speak about ordinance twenty-four dash ten, which is tax map twenty-twenty-six? It's three point nine eight eight one acres, and it's located at three ninety Virginia Street.
Thank you. All right.
Now you can say, "Close the public hearing."
I'll close that public hearing and move it to the planning commission.
Okay. So, planning commission, is there any discussion about number ten? Okay. Is there a motion with regard to approve, deny, or defer?
I move to approve to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash ten.
And so, planning commission hereby refers the matter to town council.
All right. And as a reminder, ordinance ten involves this building?
Oh, we need to vote, sorry. Okay. Yes, Gary Lister, Katie Wilson, Don Dreher, Louis Wilson?
Louis Hall.
Katie Wilson, Louis Hall, Mary Hansen, yes. I, ah--
All right.
Long day.
Yeah, long day, long day.
We'll get this, by, by the last one, we'll--
I'll have it right. I'll have it right.
Okay. Then we'll probably never have to do it again, and that's okay. All right. With the council, do we have any further discussion on ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash ten?
No.
This is the lot that involves the town hall building. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission to approve that ordinance?
So moved.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I have a second.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt you there?
Oh, gosh.
I would like to state for the record that parcel twenty-six does not have three point nine eight eight one acres.
Twenty-six?
That's, oh, it's one point three four--
These were, these were taken and advertised from the most recent commissioner revenue records. Which could not be relied upon. But that's what the code says--
Those are the official records.
--we have to rely on, and that's how we advertise it. Well, just for the record, I'd like to state that this parcel twenty-six, what the town intends to purchase, is not that. So when somebody comes back and says they're surprised you didn't get three point nine nine eight acres, I'm on the record to tell you why.
Do we know that--
What it--
And what is it exactly?
One point--
Uh-uh.
Public comment is closed.
Okay, comment is closed. It was right, it was right. All right.
Do we have a second?
Yes, Beth's, I think Beth seconded, didn't she?
Yes.
All right. Motion is made and seconded, and we'll start with Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
Larry Chuning?
Yeah, discussion? That, that is one point three four one one acres.
Right.
What it says.
Yeah. Well, that's on the map, but that--
Oh. I didn't know where he was coming from.
Yeah, yeah.
It just says one point three four one one.
It's, it's the way the ordinance is--
Okay. Yes.
--written. All right. I say yes. Alana Courtney?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to number eleven. I would like to open the public hearing for twenty-twenty-four, the ordinance twenty-twenty-four eleven, which is rezones tax map twenty-twenty-six consisting of--
It's twenty-twenty-seven.
I'm reading the wrong one there. Okay. Twenty-twenty-seven, consisting of four point four two nine two acres from R-one to R-two. Located, property located at three ninety Virginia Street.
Adjacent to it.
Huh?
Adjacent to--
Adjacent to it. Adjacent to, yes, three ninety, okay. Any discussion on that?
No, no, no. You're opening the public hearing.
It's okay, take a breath.
Okay, all right. Opening the public hearing on that particular ordinance, and do we have anyone in the public that wants to make a comment on that piece of property going from R-one to R-two? Is the property adjacent to this property? There's no one signed up, so if there's no public comment, I will turn it over to the planning commission.
The public hearing is closed.
Public hearing is closed.
Okay, and so, planning commission, is there any discussion on ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash eleven? Okay, there being no discussion, is there a motion?
I move to approve, ordinance number twenty-two four dash--
And is there a second? Okay, Don Drayer seconded. And a vote? Gary Lister? Katie Wilson? Don Drayer?
Yes.
Louis Hall?
Yes.
Mary Hansen?
Yes.
All right.
And we therefore refer this matter to council for consideration.
Council picking it up. Does council have any other comments associated with ordinance number 2024 dash 11?
No.
No.
Having no discussion, further discussion. Do I have a motion to accept the ordinance?
So moved.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. And the vote. Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
Alana Courtney?
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Tuning?
Yes.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
And Mary Hansen?
Yes.
All right.
And so the next public hearing will be on Tax Map 20B1 to B, which is a .621 acre parcel, and ordinance 24 dash 12 would rezone it from R1 to R2. It is located at 133 Waverly Road. The public hearing is now open if anyone would like to come forward and provide comments.
And there is no one signed up. So it's, does anyone have any other public comment? All right.
Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing is closed. Over to.
Over to the Planning Commission. Any discussion on 2024 dash 12? Is there a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Is that a motion to recommend approval?
Recommend approval, denial, or deferral? Okay. Is there a second? Okay, Don Drayer second. Gary Lister?
Yes.
Katie Wilson?
Yes.
Don Drayer?
Yes.
Louis Hall?
Yes.
Mary Hansen, yes. And we thereby refer to Town Council for consideration.
All right. Does the council have any further discussion on ordinance 2024 dash 12?
No.
All right, having no further discussion. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission to approve?
So moved. So moved.
All right, second?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded. We'll start with Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
Larry Tuning?
Yes.
I say yes. Alana Courtney?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
All right, 12 is approved.
So the next public, joint public hearing will be on ordinance 2024 dash 13, which pertains to Tax Map 20B1, 1, consisting of 9.4837 acres from R1 to R2. And this property is located east of 133 Waverly Road. The public hearing is now open if anyone would like to come forward and express their views.
We do have some people who have signed up. Eileen Smith?
Yes, sir.
256 Waverly Road?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Eileen Smith. I live at 2256 Waverly Road, Urbana. Our family bought this property 26 years ago because this area is a single-family dwelling neighborhood. Our home is directly across the street from the piece of property being considered by ordinance 2024 dash 13, rezoning from low-density residential district R1 to a high-density residential R2. R2 high-density residential means an area characterized by residential development other than single-dwelling family homes or duplex development. R2 high-density means land to be utilized for residential purposes to include public housing, not exceeding 32 dwelling units per acre. R2 high-density residential can also allow 40 parcels or dwelling units per two and a half acres. This would allow a trailer park. I am concerned about present neighborhood property value if this rezoning occurs. I am concerned about additional runoff into the creek and then into the river if this rezoning occurs. I am concerned about major traffic increase on this street if this rezoning occurs. With this information, I ask that you keep the rezoning for this parcel at R1. With this information, I ask that you do not rezone this parcel R2. And I'd be glad to give you a copy of what I've just told you if you'd like one.
That will be put in the record?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Powell?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak. My name is Mary Powell. My husband Randall and I reside at 267 Waverly Road, locally known as the Hall House. Louis's family built that house. Our driveway is actually an easement that runs through the property that we're talking about in 2024-13. My good friend, the neighbor, Eileen, just saved us some time because she covered most of the bullet points that I wanted to cover as well, so I won't re, I won't rehash those. But I would like to cover one other point. Randall and I are not residents of the town of Urbana, but we're certainly participants and residents of the community of Urbana. And this proposed change affects us drastically. We depend on the zoning commission to protect our property values and our way of life in this small, charming community. And if this change occurs, we will have been, what, what word should I use? Violated, but certainly let down by the zoning commission. So I think that we need to consider that the zoning commission's primary responsibility is to protect us, our way of life, our property values, and make sure that our single-family neighborhoods are where they're supposed to be. Multi-family dwellings are where they're supposed to be, businesses are where they're supposed to be, and so on. If this zoning change takes place, our trust will have been violated, our property values decreased, and the door will be open for our way of life to be changed forever. I respectfully request that this zoning, rezoning be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Name, please.
Uh, yeah, Zach Lipinski?
Could you repeat that?
Zach Lipinski?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Just wanted to touch base on a few comments that were made. In regards to, you know, the drainage and the off-front of, of water from the property, there are RPA setbacks on the land already, so there's protection there with natural drainage.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but what was your address?
I, I am, I don't live in town. My address is, I own a property in town, 167 Cross Street. Or being a 23175.
Okay, you live there?
It's my, it's my property. Yes. So, and I also wanted to just touch base on the code. In R2, I don't believe there is any recommendation or approval to have trailers in this R2 zoning. As well as, I've kept a lot of history with building and usage with 32 units an acre might call for that in the zoning case, I don't, or in the classification, which I, I'm not quite sure, but is not plausible in any type of land. Got 12 years of building experience, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? With that, I'll close the the public comment area and turn this over to the planning commission.
Okay.
And I would just, if I may comment, I understand the last gentleman indicated no intent to put mobile homes there. Anything that's a by right use under that zoning designation could be constructed on that property.
Okay, so Planning Commission, what?
Is that a by right usage?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
The by right uses are those buildings in uses permitted by right in the R1 low-density residential district. Number two, multiple family dwellings subject to special regulations of this article. Those are, you have to go through a special use permit process.
Which is not by right?
Which is not by right.
That is not by right?
That's correct. And three, attached single-family dwellings or townhouses subject to the special regulations of this article.
Okay, so that's not a by right.
I would ask that you maintain control of the meeting.
Okay.
Public hearing has been closed, and the planning commission is in its deliberations.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So Planning Commission, what discussion would you like to have on this issue?
We've spent a lot of time in the last couple of years talking about how little housing there is. How difficult it is for businesses to find places for employees to live and attract employees to this town. I think that, while I certainly recognize the concerns, and I hope none of us want a trailer park across the street, if I understand where it is correctly, I do think realistically there is a need for more housing. And given the clarification that in fact, any design for the property would have to go through the planning commission and would have to get approved, I can't imagine any of us would be interested in something that is going to turn Urbana into, you know, Logan Circle in downtown DC. You know, no one's interested in doing that. Given those protections and given our town's desperate need for affordable housing, so that our, our commercial areas can continue to operate and they don't shut down as we can't afford to hire anybody. I understand the concern, but I think that could be addressed when we see what plans actually there are.
Other discussion?
I, I sympathize with the, the people over there. I mean, I think, you know, you brought those houses thinking one thing and, but.
Madam Chair, if I might also point out that the applicant for the rezoning, or the property owner, could have offered voluntary proffers. Sometimes people will proffer out certain uses to provide greater assurance as to what might or might not go on.
So has that occurred?
No.
Okay, and so can we ask the property owner to?
No.
Talk, discuss that?
No. They have to be voluntary. I just point out that that is something that can occur in some situations. I don't know whether the property owner might be interested in that or not.
I, I don't know what to say or do here.
He's not.
I don't know if it's fair for me to not come to say anything.
Are you the property owner?
Yes.
You should not say anything.
Yes.
What I, what I wanted to say, though, is that I hope that we on the planning commission would try to make it so that it would be agreeable to everyone, so that it would be acceptable, and so that there wouldn't be any huge impact on your lives with, with traffic or with congestion or anything else. That's not what we're interested in, certainly. You know, so.
Well, in the clarification, I think Mr. Costin didn't we just get that in fact, whatever plans there are for the property would have to go through
A special use permit.
If it's not a by right use.
Right.
Okay. Can we get clarification on what the by right uses are?
The by right uses are the ones that are permitted by right, so an administrative, an administrative permit is all that's needed.
Wait, but what?
What are the by right uses?
Go back and read, okay. Sorry. Okay, a building or land shall be used only for the following purposes. This is permitted uses and structures. Number one, those buildings in uses permitted by right in the R1 low-density residential district, that's essentially single-family houses. Multiple family dwellings subject to a special regulations of this article. And then attached single-family dwellings or townhouses subject to the special regulations of this article. The special regulations depend on what type of housing is being proposed and how it's being proposed. So a separate application would have to be made, which, depending on how it's presented, would come before the commission in the town council.
Okay.
I, I know that's clear as mud.
It is clear as mud.
This is what I get to do every day, is figure out what this mud.
It is clear as mud. So I.
What I understand you to say is that anything other than a single-family dwelling is going to have to go through a special exception.
A review process, yes.
Okay, okay. Other questions? Or discussion? Okay, is there a motion? Yes, Katie?
So is this to the, where Oyster Festival uses that grassy area, the nine, that's, is that the one 16?
The big one?
This is to the right of that?
It's 13, yes. 13 is.
No, I know which one you're talking about, but I'm trying to visualize them in town. 13 is, is, is the cross from your houses you're talking about? Well, I know where you live, I know where you live.
Yeah, so it's right across the street from there.
It's like the big grassy, kind of metal area.
Very well controlled by the owners and designed.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I was visualizing.
Okay.
I'm not sure I'm getting it. The, so is 16, where, where's the Oyster Festival, is 16? 16. That's, that's always where they do the, you know, yeah. Okay. So this is beyond that. It's all the grassy area that's stopped. I just want to make sure that's what it is.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve ordinance number. Recommendation of approval.
Recommend approval.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Katie Wilson?
Is there a second?
Oh, is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay. And now for a vote. Gary Lister?
Yes.
Okay, Katie Wilson? Yes. Don Drayer?
Yes.
And you have to abstain. Yes, okay.
You have to abstain.
Yes. And Mary Hansen says yes. Okay, and thereby the planning commission refers this matter to council for consideration.
Yes.
All right, now in council, just to reiterate, the R1 uses are by right, but other types of dwellings are going to be subject to special use consideration.
Special.
Special.
And with, and, and with that as a major linchpin, do we have any further discussion? Sandy?
No.
Marjorie?
Well, I was just going to say there, we can't bring a trailer park in there. I mean, that's already in the ordinance anyway, no mobile homes.
Manufactured or mobile home parks are permitted by special use permit.
Oh, right.
Okay.
Manufactured or mobile home subdivisions are permitted by special use permit. 17 dash 4.4.3 items, I read them in reverse order, 16 and 15. But the application you have before you is a rezoning application for R2 and nothing more.
Right.
Right, so those would have to go through special use.
Right.
Okay, Alana?
What?
Any question?
I'll vote now. No, I have no questions.
Okay, Larry?
Well, I can tell you I'd never vote, put a trailer park in there. I don't think we would have thought of putting a trailer park in there either.
No.
I don't think that's, that's going to happen. I know this land. When I was, I'm 75, when I was six or seven, I knew just how far a shotgun would go. Because Willie Gale kept us off that land with a shotgun. Granted, he probably shot up in the air, but I've been all through that land, every inch of it. Lot of it's not developable. I mean, it's 9.4 acres, but it's got a stream that runs all the way to the firehouse. And so whoever owns the land, well, it's Louis, whoever it is, they're going to have to contend with that. Chesapeake Bayak and all that other stuff, they can't get so much on the property. Our land runs right behind it. And I just don't have a problem. Because I know, I mean, what? And I just don't have a problem, because I know, I mean, what member of council would allow a trailer park to go there?
May I just say, I know this is...
No. No. Public comment is closed. Excuse me, public, excuse me. The public comment is closed.
Okay. Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
All right. Anything else from either of you? All right. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-13?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second? Is that a second from Sandy?
Second.
All right.
I think it's longer, but it'll be me.
All right. Motion moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Beth Justice?
I will say no.
Larry Tuning?
Yes.
I say yes. Alana Courtney?
No.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
And Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
All right. And that passes five to...
Mr. Mayor, your vote?
Yes.
And so the next joint public hearing is on ordinance 2024-14. This would rezone tax map 20B13A, consisting of a .413 acre parcel from R1 to B1. The property is located southwest of 133 Waverly Road. If anyone would like to provide public comments on this matter, please come forward.
Nobody has signed up for public comment. Anyone out in the audience want to make a public comment at this point?
Is that private road?
Having no public comment, I close the public hearing and refer this to the planning commission for discussion.
So Planning Commission, what discussion do you wish to have regarding 2024-14?
Which is this?
Who's on that property?
It's a road.
It's a road.
It's a road.
Is this owner saying anything?
No, I don't think so.
Mm-mm.
Is it further up?
Nope.
Is it, is it B dot that, that may change it?
We own it. It's this sliver of road, right where my pen is.
Yep.
That carries up from the end of safe maintenance, I think that's up to the well lot. And so it's this right here, it's a separate parcel right here.
So is there even anything that could be developed? No, it's just all right.
It goes back to my earlier statement, trying to get all the town properties and facilities under the same uniform of classification, and we own that one. It's an access road to the well, to the well in the tank.
Okay, any further discussion regarding 2024-14? Is there a motion?
I'm moved to approve to adopt ordinance 2024-14.
To recommendation of approval.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, and the vote, Gary Lister?
Yes.
Katie Wilson?
Yes.
Don Dreyer?
Yes.
And Louis Hall?
Yes.
And Mary Hansen, yes. So we hereby refer this to town council.
All right.
For consideration.
And council, do we have any discussion on changing that, essentially making the road that accesses the well B1? All right. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 24-14?
I'm moved.
I think Sandy Sturgill gets the approval. Marjorie, would you like the second? All right. Motion is moved and seconded, and we'll start at the other end. Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
Larry Tuning?
Yes.
I say yes. Alana Courtney?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
All right. Next.
Is ordinance 2024-15, which would rezone tax map 20B13A, consisting of a .902 acre parcel from R1 to B1, and it is located at 138 Laurel Hill Drive.
Crap. And this is the well lot.
Okay.
Okay.
No one has signed up for public comment. Anyone from the audience want to make any comment? No one stepping forward. I'll close the public hearing.
And I will...
Referring to the planning commission.
To Planning Commission, is there any discussion regarding this well lot? What we're referring to as the well lot? Remind us what the blacked-out parcels are.
The blacked-out parcels are the parcels that belong to Hampton Road Sanitation District, but they did not sign on to the applications. They'll probably, they will probably come back later, but at this time, they're not included in the rezoning package. They are in the town, but they're not part of the rezoning package.
Okay.
So the flag-shaped lot in between is where you'd see the water tower.
Right.
So they're zoned R1 now?
They are R1, and they'll stay R1 until they come back in with a signed application. Yes, sir.
Okay, so it was a matter of they're not signing the application in time for this action?
That's correct. I will tell you that they were advised in March, and they said it would be no problem, and they apparently ran into some bureaucracy.
So is there a motion on 2024-15?
I move to approve ordinance 2024-15.
I'll second. So you have a motion to recommend approval?
To recommend approval. Well, that's the council one. I know, we didn't, I know.
You didn't get one.
I know, that's why I'm confused too. Okay. So, and Gary Lister seconded, or did Gary, oh, no, Katie Wilson seconded. And so let's take the vote. Gary Lister?
Yes.
And Katie Wilson?
Yes.
Don Dreyer?
Yes.
And Louis Hall?
Yes.
Mary Hansen, yes. We hereby refer to council for action.
Thank you very much. Any discussion from council?
I would like to ask, Ted, will this, the sections for HRSD, will that require a second public hearing and go through the same things once they, okay?
Technically, they're not engaged, involved in this package.
No, I know not this package. I'm just asking at a later date.
Later date, yes.
And the black triangle I thought belonged to the town, that's an HRSD?
It was incorrectly identified on the plat, it is an HRSD.
Really? Okay.
We thought the same thing initially, but we went back and go into the Commissioner of Revenue, that's what it showed up as.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion from council?
Nope.
Having no further discussion, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2024 ORD-15?
I'm moved.
And do I have a second on that?
A second.
All right. Motion moved and seconded. Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
Larry Tuning?
Yes.
I say yes. Alana Courtney?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin? Marjorie Austin? Yes?
Yes.
Come on back. Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
I was, I'm sorry, I was reading the map. I apologize.
That's okay.
And so the next joint public hearing is ordinance number 2024-16, which would rezone tax map 20B12, consisting of a .791 acre parcel from R1 to B1. It is located south of 330 Virginia Street. The public hearing is now open.
No one has signed up? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Okay. This is the, one of the Middlesex County Fire Department parcels, and I will turn this now over to...
The public hearing is closed.
Public hearing is closed. I will turn this now over to the planning commission.
Okay.
For their input.
Okay, so Planning Commission, is there any discussion on this property? Currently zoned R1, and it would be zoned B1. Okay. Is there a motion to refer?
I will move to refer 2024-16.
With a recommendation of approval.
With a recommendation of approval.
Is there a second? And a vote? Gary Lister?
Yes.
Katie Wilson?
Yes.
Don Dreyer?
Yes.
And Louis Hall?
Yes.
And Mary Hansen is yes, and we hereby refer to council for consideration.
All right. Do we have any discussion amongst council? Can I have a motion to approve the rezoning of this parcel from R1 to B1?
I'll make a motion as for 2024-16 as presented.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
Alana Courtney?
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Tuning?
Yes.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
And Mary Hansen?
Yes.
And?
The last joint public hearing?
Yay.
Is ordinance number 2024-17, which rezones tax map 2B12A, consisting of 1.3 acres from R1 to B1, and it's located south of 330 Virginia Street.
It's the Middlesex Volunteer Fire Department property.
So the public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to come forward and provide comments?
Any comment from anybody? Anyone? No comment? I close the public hearing and refer this matter to the planning commission for consideration.
So Planning Commission, any discussion on this motion? Okay, is there a motion to be made?
I move to, no, I wrote, move to refer this ordinance number 2024-17, I've been moving over, to council with a recommendation to approve.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, Louis Hall seconded. And so the vote, Gary Lister?
Yes.
Katie Wilson?
Yes.
And Don Dreyer?
Yes.
Louis Hall?
Yes.
And Mary Hansen says yes. We hereby refer to council for consideration.
Thank you, Planning Commission, for all of your hard work. And now with council, do we have any further discussion on ordinance number 2024-17?
I do have a question, just so I can verify this in my head. This is not the actual fire department, but the fields behind the...
That was 16.
Okay, so 17 is, I, yeah, I'm looking at it. I have it, I'm just, I know where it is. I'm just...
The fire department, the...
Oh, I see, yes, you're right.
Facing out onto, the apparatus faces out onto Virginia Street.
Right.
You're right.
These are the two recreational fields behind it. 16 is the southernmost, 17 is...
Right.
Yep.
Okay, I was just, I just needed to clarify that in my head. Thank you so much.
I apologize, my bad. So, any further discussion?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept this ordinance, to approve this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to accept 2024-17 as presented.
That's a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, yeah.
Isn't that what, did I say that?
No, you said accept.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion to approve. I apologize. 2024-17 as presented.
All right. Do I have a second on that?
Second.